Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us this evening to this committee of the whole meeting of December 8th. For those who are viewing us, you could also view us on Channel 96, where Comcast Xfinity, and on Facebook. This evening, we are going to be viewing a presentation from Dr. Leslie Torres, Superintendent of the Board of Ed. And the resolution that's going to be discussed is a resolution with Mayor Bronin, with a company resolution that would allow the Hartford Public Schools to establish a non-lapsing fund up to 2% of their budgeted appropriations as permitted under the Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-248A. And this evening, joining us is Councilwoman Shirley Sargent, Councilman John Gale, Councilwoman Marilyn Rosetti, Councilman Nick Lebron, Councilman James Sanchez, Majority Leader Clark, Corporation Council Howard Rifkin. Also on the screens are members of the Hartford Public Access TV. With us again, we have Dr. Leslie Torres and the Acting Chief Financial Officer. And Dave, I apologize, I know we just met on the screen, I totally forgot your last name, so it's Dave.
It's been a few minutes already, huh? Dave Flag.
Dave Flag, thank you, I should remember that. Also, just joined us is Councilman Sanchez and Councilwoman Wildalise Bermudas. With that said, again, thank you, everyone, for taking your time to be with us this evening. The floor is yours, Dr. Torres.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President Rosado, and I want to thank everyone for the opportunity to address you. I know that you did have a previous committee meeting in which we had a conflict on our side, we had a board workshop that evening, and so my hope is through the presentation that I can answer some of the questions that you had, and then, of course, be available for additional questions. And so I will share my screen, and I do believe that the presentation has been forwarded to everyone.
And Dr. Torres, while you do that, I just want to say for the record that this was already discussed, this resolution was discussed in committee, it was referred back to council with no recommendation, we will not be making any recommendations or taking any votes this evening. This is just purposely for clarification and to give you the opportunity to address the council with this presentation.
Thank you. And joining me, yes, is Acting Chief Financial Officer David Flag, who will jump in at any point if there are additional questions, given that he has additional visibility into some of our finances. And for the presentation, the goal is to have just a brief overview of our multi-year strategic planning, the structural budget challenges, the future needs that we are facing, and the benefits to the carryforward account. I wanted to just have a step back because there is additional context that is important here, as you all consider what you have before you. And so with regard to an overview of our multi-year strategic planning, our annual budget process is the most important tool that allows us to align resources to our focus areas and the needs of our students. Our goal for today is to illustrate how that carryforward funds play a very important role in this process. We are building on our strategic choices of the past to continue to conduct multi-year planning, rather than, you know, those one-time fixes that are really not sustainable nor integrated with our long-term strategy. And as we all know, for example, we have spent the last three years consolidating, rightsizing our school district as part of longer-term sustainability planning. I also tried to, in this presentation, address some of the questions that were raised last time and I felt might not have been fully answered. And so in terms of the non-lapsing unexpended funds account, is a carryforward account that allows us to spend a limited amount of dollars next year that would otherwise, of course, be returned to the city. And the flexibility allows us to respond to changes in what we call a very dynamic environment. It is limited in scope and is closely monitored. This was discussed last time in your meeting, right? No more than 2% of total district budget for educational purposes only, and the use of the funds must be approved by the Board of Ed. I know that there were specific questions last time as to the approval, and while there were wonderings about the expenditure approval body, whether it was who the expenditure approval body was, the statute does state that the Board of Education approves the expenditures as to how the funds would be spent. And so I also wanted to just highlight here with the visual, you know, the amount of the carryforward, as in the past. So we, as with many urban districts, we at Hartford Public Schools have a structural deficit, which you all understand well, with rising costs, the rising cost being faster than the revenue that comes in. And, you know, as we sit here today, we know that the pandemic has exacerbated these challenges manyfold, right? We know that we have a greater death than breath and even greater inequity in terms of student needs, the ongoing constraints in terms of service delivery, and very unpredictable cost implications. I'll talk about that in a few slides ahead. And increased financial pressure with drops in tax revenue and our enrollment. If we continue with our enrollment patterns, we know that we see an enrollment decline, reduction every single year. And, you know, the structural deficit is true for us every year. And as we look forward to next budget, the next year, and I just finished my community budget presentations, as I look ahead, we have increases, for example, in our special education tuition of about $8.6 million, and our contractual increases about $4 million. And so just those two alone, right, equal to $12 to $13 million that, you know, do not account for any new strategic investments that we would need. So in terms of strategic reductions and investment, I did want to have an opportunity to step back and provide a visual as to where have we, you know, just the landscape in the last five years in terms of budget mitigations, and how we have addressed the structural deficit. We have done so head-on, and we've taken action, as you can see here, to reduce central office overhead positions throughout consolidation and co-locations, while trying to do the best that we can to invest, to meet the needs of our students. Specifically, we've invested in student engagement specialists, additional teachers for our students that are English learners, middle school counselors, and middle school athletics to support the implementation of our standalone community middle schools. And now we are facing the future needs. We know that we have urgent needs for the future due to the impact of the pandemic, especially on our students with the highest needs. And so what we're now looking at is assessing the need of our students, not only academically, but social and emotional needs. We know for a fact that we are going to have to provide extra opportunities, extra staffing, and extra programming for what we call "education recovery." And we're going to have to provide additional social, emotional, and wellness supports for our students. And just to give you, to put it into additional context, you know, a study that was conducted by McKinsey and Company lifted alarming, alarming data trends, and that is that the impact of remote learning throughout the March and even throughout this entire year could be equivalent to 12.4 months of learning loss. And so when we take that finding and we overlay it with the challenges that we are having in terms of attendance, especially for students that live in high-need communities, we know that the needs that we have in the very near future are going to pose a challenge to us. And with that comes, you know, unpredictable fund categories. The following categories, and I know this was a question before, you know, what are these funds going to potentially be used for? I wanted to highlight here the following, you know, categories of funds that are critical components of our multi-year strategy to support our students and mitigate the COVID impact that are increasingly unpredictable, right? Salaries, for example, and whether or not we have current vacancies now, but we know we're going to need additional staff to support our students. We know in terms of insurance and benefits that, you know, we did implement our HSA plan and incurred less in terms of, you know, prescriptions and health insurance claims during COVID. The other side of that is that we anticipate growing demand in those areas in future years. And, you know, special education, we did have fewer students attending private programs during COVID, and we know, looking ahead, that we're going to have more students attending our public in-state program. So I just wanted to give you a brief overview of some of the categories that we already know will be increasing but are highly unpredictable at the moment. And lastly, just to recap the benefits of the carryforward fund. It does allow, it provides us short-term flexibility to address either delayed or additional expenses as a result of our way of responding to COVID. It also provides short-term flexibility to address any additional expenses that we know we are going to have in order to engage in what is called academic recovery and accelerating supports for students. And then lastly, the funds do remain dedicated to educational purposes for our students with our highest levels of needs in ways that align to those long-term priorities and the strategies. We want to make sure that funds that are, you know, in the carryforward account are very specific and intentional to supporting our equity needs for our students. So that is an overview of some of the questions, well, our context, attempt to address some of the questions that you had last time that we were not able to address, and just frame the future, the immediate future needs that we will have as a result of COVID, and how these funds are key to our strategy. I will stop sharing, and if there are any questions.
Councilwoman Sargent.
Dr. Torres, thank you so very much for giving us some of your time. We know you're a busy person this time of year, and if I don't see you, going to wish you and your family a safe and happy holiday. A couple of questions, I think your second to last slide, where you talked about these funds to be used for the salaries, insurance, benefits, and special education tuition. It looks like it's about, let me see, I'm saying about four, five, about $8 million, about eight, approximately about $8 million. Would this be taken out of that contingency fund?
It could. These are some of the funds and the categories, Councilwoman Sargent, that we have identified as potential. At this point, we're still developing our budget and our shortfall, we're actually predicting a $20 million shortfall for next year. And so I wanted to specifically highlight the broader impact categories that we would say, and say to our Board of Education, this carryover fund can be applied to. Mr. Flag, is there anything else that you would add to Councilwoman Sargent's question?
No, I think you've said it well.
Thank you. Follow-up question, about how many staffing are you thinking, approximately, I know you can't really say for sure right now, that you may be looking for the $2.4 million?
So, that's a great question, and we are in the process of trying to narrow in. I will give you some examples. So we know that we added 15 custodial staff this year currently to address our COVID response. We have to figure that out moving forward because those funds were supported through our COVID relief fund. We know that students are going to need, already they're presenting that way, with additional social, emotional, mental health supports. And so that could mean additional social workers, and even 10 additional social workers is about $1 million. So I just want to give you kind of a frame, Councilwoman Sargent, for the potential expenses. One other one that we are, you know, beginning to try to map out is our student engagement challenge. Many of you know that last year, while we did improve in our chronic absenteeism because of the investments that we made with student engagement specialists across all schools, doesn't matter if they're magnet, non-magnet, doesn't matter the grade level, all schools did see an increase in chronic absenteeism. And so we know that we have a formula that aligns, for example, student engagement specialists for schools that have a certain percentage of chronic absenteeism. So that already has doubled in terms of a need. And so I know that doesn't directly answer your question in terms of the number, but I wanted to kind of frame the context and the potential level of need.
Through you, Madam Chair, may I have just one more question?
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you so very much. So we kind of said that these funds are, you know, contingency, you know, rainy day funds, we kind of labeled it without a proper terminology, and, you know, one of the feedback I received is, you know, if you have, you know, this, you know, several million dollars, you know, for a rainy day fund, why aren't they being used in the current school year?
I will allow Mr. Flag to speak to that, and that speaks to some of the, I'll start by framing, you know, that slide that talks about the critical components and the increasing unpredictability. So, for example, we have vacancies, as we speak, right, that we could not fill because of certain COVID challenges. And so that plays into the entire picture that we're trying to solve for. And I'll allow Mr. Flag to also add additional commentary here.
Yeah, I'll just add just a couple more things. So we are projecting a deficit this year, about $178,000. It started at $12 million, but as the Superintendent just mentioned, we are having some challenges in staffing with some of the vacancies. And in addition to that, we're seeing a similar trend that we saw last year with people going to the doctor. So our healthcare costs are down about 8% from last year, and it's hard to predict when that's going to change, as you would imagine at some point folks are going to want to get back in and get back on their schedules. But early on, the first five months of this year, we're seeing some favorability there in terms of the expected cost that we had in our healthcare account.
But if these additional funds, contingency funds, I thought they only could be used for school-based programs. You wouldn't be able to use them for additional healthcare costs that may happen in '21, '22's budget, would you?
I don't know exactly, you know, about the terminology of where they can be used, but I think even if we were able to use them towards some of the positions that Dr. Torres was talking about around special education and some of the special needs that some of our students have, that would be helpful. And I would almost consider that school-based.
Okay. Thank you so very much, Dr. Torres. Thank you, Mr. Dave.
Councilman Sanchez, did you have a question?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Torres and Dave. So, besides having a surplus from the funds from the city, do you also have a surplus from grants that's been given to the school, federal state?
We were able to, Dave, you can speak to the carryover that are usually allowed with some of the grants, but if you can also clarify the COVID relief, because there's always a misconception that, you know, we got a certain amount of money for COVID and that that is sitting in our account when those funds are reimbursable funds, and so they're not, you know, readily available to us.
So, I'm just trying to ask the right, you know, the question in the correct manner. So right now, you're looking to create this, you know, this fund with the excess money from the city, right? Otherwise, it goes back to the city, to the general fund. I'm just curious as to the amount of money that was saved from other, from grants, whether it's from the state, from the federal, you know, any federal grants, do you have the dollar amount of that?
You mean for this current year? Because we're still projecting a $178,000 deficit for this current year.
A deficit?
Yeah, we had $12 million start going into this current year, and we've been able to mitigate that $12 million, and we're projecting $178,000.
So if you're going into a deficit, how is it that we have this excess amount of money? I'm not understanding.
For the carryover?
Yes.
That we're hoping to? We were not able to use all of those dollars initially.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Bermudas, followed by Councilman Gale. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez, for your presentation, and through you, Council President. So you mentioned, as part of the presentation, that there had been some retention problems in reference to employees. In what categories have you seen significant retention problems?
So let me clarify, it's hiring, not retaining, hiring. So I just wanted to clarify, and it's really across. We usually have a challenge in terms of middle school, for example, is always, is a shortage area in terms of science and math. And then we have special education, specifically speech and language therapists, school psychologists, those are always areas of challenge for us, and then now we have a pandemic, and it's even more of a challenge.
We're preparing for the upcoming budget cycle. I know it seems kind of early to talk about that, but then again, before you know it, the budget cycle will be here. And so as you're all preparing for it, as we're preparing for it, as the mayor's office is preparing for it, what areas, I mean, on council, right, we are able to receive the budget from the respective department heads and from the Board of Education, from the Hartford Public Schools. And so we approve a budget together in collaboration with everybody who works so hard to make sure that we provide the resources that are needed. And so as we're preparing for this upcoming budget, what are some of the things that we need to really focus on and be attuned with? I mean, there's so many changes that are happening, there's a lot of unpredictability with the pandemic, but what are some things that we should be considering from our end?
You know, I would say the wraparound supports. We can provide for students when they're in school with us, but I always like to remind everyone that students are in school 20% of the time. And yet, right, the expectation is that all of the service provision happen in the school, which is a highly unreasonable expectation, because we know that many of our students have additional needs that, you know, we're not school-based. And so I would say a focus around the wraparound supports that are directly met either, you know, through after-school programming or supports for families, right? Because it's directly connected to how our students are able to access learning. The other piece is, I still don't know the full impact of the ransomware attack, right? We know that it was significant on Hartford Public Schools. It was not even a month ago, Dave, are you, would you be able to say that we have full access to everything again for accounting purposes? And so, you know, that's, I don't know what the full impact is, Councilwoman Bermudas, but it is a wondering that's in the back of my head. And given that that is something that we kind of lean into it together, you know, through the MHIS lens, is something that I just, you know, I'm mindful of. But primary would be the wraparound supports for our students and by extension, their families.
Councilman Gale.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, Dr. Torres, and good evening, Flag. I want to just pick up on Councilman Sanchez's last question and just make sure that I understand and that the public understands what we're talking about. Your budget cycle is the same budget cycle as the city's, is it not, July 1st to June 30th?
Yes.
And the money that we're talking about is actually money that was a surplus ending July 30th of 2020, is that correct?
That is correct.
So when we talk about the deficit of $178,000, you're talking about the current year, and you're projecting through June 30th of 2021?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, so I think we just, there may have been a little confusion, I want to just sort of keep these two things separate.
Yep.
The current year started July 1st of 2020, it goes through June 30th of 2021, and it's that year that right now you started with a big deficit, and you've managed to whittle that down to what looks like $178,000, but you don't know how you're going to end the year, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
But the money that we're talking about with the resolution that's in front of us, this is indeed a true surplus, that when you closed your books on June 30th of 2020, so some five and a half months ago when you closed your books, it turned out you didn't really spend the entire budget, and in large part, I think this was somewhat COVID-related. Am I correct about all that?
That is correct. It's good clarity, yep.
Okay, so, and I think the other thing that people need to understand is that when we take this surplus that you had and we put it into this fund, the fund, and I think that because of the amount of this surplus, the fund is going to perhaps be funded through. because of the amount of this surplus, the fund is going to perhaps be funded, let's say, five point nine million. I could be off by a little bit there, but um, uh, so am I about right with five point nine million?
Five point six.
Five point six.
Five point six, all right, let's get the right number, five point six. So when we get the five point six into that account, that is the maximum that that account can have. And if it turned out this year coming up, where you already have a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar deficit, if by June thirtieth, you had a two million dollar bud- budget deficit, you'd be able to dip into this five point six and take that two million. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
And when you did that, that five point six would now be reduced to three point six in my example.
Correct.
So, so if you run a deficit, you're not going to be able to add to this fund at all. You're only going to be able to pull from it.
Yeah, that's correct. That is correct.
And if you had successive deficits over the next two years or three years, this fund would just completely disappear.
Yes.
Okay, I, I, that really answers all my questions. I think I just wanted to make sure that I understood it and, and hopefully everybody else understands uh what the impact of this fund is. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilman LeBron?
First of all, I want to thank you, Dottora, for coming uh this evening and Senor Flight. Um, I know it's been busy. You were just on that budget meeting and I sure the parents were asking you all kinds of questions in different directions, so it's, it's late. And um, again, thank you for coming and circling back and and offering this opportunity to clarify some of the outstanding questions that we have. So, um, the first thing I'm going to ask is that, or just to clarify, the last person that, from the Hartford Public School side, when we were asking about the projected budget, um, didn't I have clarity on the projected budget? And so I just want to make that differentiation that that led, and I, and, and it's no one's fault, right, but that led, that was the genesis of the compounding of questions, right? So the, so at the beginning, when you talk about that there was a COVID uh related savings from the spring, let's say, everyone uses March thirteenth as COVID, right? So from COVID, March thirteenth to June thirtieth, that there was this surplus and that now, under the same COVID um uh restrictions that happened in March, obviously, we're at a different place mentally, but the COVID nonetheless, that if there was a deficit, or, or excuse me, a surplus that equaled two point six million from COVID, and that now we're six months in, the logic would be, and obviously it's much more detailed, I know Mr. Flight, you probably be like, that's not how finances work, but the logic being, right? On a really high level, back of the envelope math would be, well, then we're probably that much over in the budget, right? Like, because that's what was saved, so. Excuse me. I just wanted to provide that context because it lends itself to more questions. So how did you, or what, I know you're trying to do it in the presentation, but why is that logic not the same?
The, the logic, let me just see if I can play this back correctly. Is, is it the logic from saving money in the spring and, and sort of carrying that forward into this year? Is that what you're thinking?
No, what I'm saying is, if, if we have a given, right, that three months equals uh two point, whatever, half of two, five point six is, two point eight million dollars was saved from March through June, right? That goes into the surplus. And now for this fiscal year, we go from June and, and we're about six months in, right?
Yep.
That, why would that projected surplus not be double, being that we already have a given from March through June? Um, why would that not, logic not carry over, I think is the genesis. So when we asked that question about the projected budget, we weren't able to get clear answers on it.
Yeah, and I think um so part of that savings we have seen, because we started this year with a deficit of twelve point four million dollars, and we've been able to mitigate that down to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And that was through a couple similar items. One was, um, I mentioned earlier around our, our insurance cost and just, you know, the presumption is people not going to the doctor as frequently. Um, the second one was around um our, our um special education cost. So those are expected to be higher than what we had budgeted, but not at the plane that we've seen in historical years. We've been running nine to ten percent growth per year, and we're thinking that's going to be around seven percent this year. So I think, you know, without getting into the math, I think we're seeing similar trends early this year than what we, as what we saw in the spring. Just not carry forward to a full year yet.
So with that being said, going to the budget and using your um your uh slideshow, which thank you, it helped explain a lot. Um, what is the language that says that we, um, I know there's a state statute or, um, that states that we have to fund at the same level every year? What's the name of that? Um, uh, Dr. Torres, uh, or, or, or Mr. Flight?
The minimum budget requirement, the MBR?
Yeah, yeah, the MBR. So we have an MBR, right? So the MBR is in place. We have an ECS formula that's done by the state that has been the same um for, or been the same for a few years now. I know we, we want more, but it's been the same. Then we have a held harmless uh state uh law that says that regardless of the enrollment at um the city level, the funds stay the same. So with that being said, can you explain to me on that slide where you said that there's increased financial constraints with lower enrollment and lower tax revenue when the budget remains the same?
Yeah, I can explain with regard to student enrollment. Um, so just because the enrollment that we are held harmless, uh, you know, there are students that come with additional costs. So a state funding of, you know, thirteen thousand and, and some change um doesn't necessarily mean that that's the only um the only expense, if you will, right, that comes attached to a student. We know that for some students, you know, we have added um out-of-district placement costs that can go anywhere from you know, thirty to one hundred thousand dollars per student. And, and if you, if I may, uh, Councilman LeBron, you, you also asked a question, and I know that Dave answered it in terms of the, the quarterly um, you know, progression. One other thing that I would like to add is that, um, you know, there were other um uh expenses, for example, some potential contractual obligations that, you know, for example, were going to be carried out, you know, at the end of the year. I, I'm using as an example that because we were closed, right, didn't need to. At times, we have uh coaches or consultants working with staff, but um that, you know, no longer took place because um schools were closed, but it didn't, it doesn't necessarily mean that that carries over right to this year.
And um just for clarification, let's call it, I know you have a name for it, and I apologize, let's call it a rainy day fund, right? Um, or whatever, I know this is more official language, but does this go into perpetuity? Like, so, I mean, i- is it their potential for carryover? I know it's maxed out at the two percent, but is their potential, let's say we, we're flush at the end of every year, we meet the books, it's no plus nor minuses. This five point six million dollars can be carried over every year in perpetuity, correct?
Not to exceed the, the two, um, the carryover fund can never exceed the two percent.
Right, but I mean, let's say you guys do a fantastic job with your accounting, the magic's done. Essentially, that, that five point six million dollars can keep going into some kind of state legislation or, or some other, um, right? Okay, um, and so uh just in terms of trying to um get down into the processes, so during the year, during the year, can you tap into these funds during the year as you see fit?
Well, there would have to be um a, a process for that, right? So the Board of Education through the budget process. So say we go through this budget and we deem that we actually have a twenty or a twenty-five or fifteen million dollar deficit. We would potentially say, um, you know, we would mitigate um pending, right, the five point six million dollars, which is, you know, Councilman Gale used, you know, that uh as an example. Um, and so through the Board of Education's approval of our budget, if it were identified that way, that's how we would deem uh to access the account.
Thank you. And then what, through you, Madam Chair, one more. I promise. Um, so the s- so would, would that request have to come back through the council? So for example, if you needed to tap into that, to, to the five point six million dollars through this next school year, your board, your board would have to approve, and then it would have to come back before us again?
Thank, were, were you addressing that to Council President Rosado or for, for?
No, uh, for you, for you, Doctor.
Okay, so it is my understanding that um there has to be like a formal process of request. Um, and so the way it works is, you know, as we did this time around, it would be a request to the mayor, as I understand it, and then, you know, processes on that end. Um, that is the one that I was unclear about. Perhaps, you know, I know council um, uh corp council is, is here, so perhaps there's clarity, or if not, we can kind of circle back.
Through you, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I do think that um there would need to be a resolution before the city council approving any expenditure against the uncommitted fund balance. Because it is, in fact, the uncommitted fund balance of the city from which these resources would be taken to pay for an educational expenditure.
Thank you so much, Attorney Rifkin, for that clarification. Um, and thank you again to uh Dr. Torres Rodriguez and uh and Mr. Flight. It's Mr. Flight, right? Is it Mr. Flight?
It's Flight.
Okay, all right, so thank you both for taking time out and, and answering uh our questions. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman LeBron. Uh, Councilman Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, through you, Dr. Torres, it's always a pleasure. Uh, Mr. Flight, uh, it's good to see you. Question. With the adminis- administering of this, of this uh fund, uh, is this administered through the fun- uh Finance Department of HPS or the Finance Department of, um, of the City of Hartford?
I, I actually think it would be through the City of Hartford because the funds are sitting with the city currently.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I have one more. I just, and I, I understand uh regarding grants and that there's certain grants uh that allow, as you said, Dr. Torres Rodriguez, uh to be carried over uh due to uh certain circumstances uh which the grantee has to apply uh to the grantor for a carryover. Uh, is there, regarding your federal funds, like the Title I, Title III and other funds, uh, is, is there a, a natural carryover, or does those funds uh have to be used within that, uh, that particular school year?
Um, you know, so every year, there, there's not really a natural carryover, but there's an allowance within the entitlement funds that's usually up to about fifteen percent of your um grant award that's allowed to be carried over into the next school year. And then when those funds have to be used, they're really dependent upon each grant. Sometimes it's within ninety days of the end of the school year, sometimes it's within six or nine months, so we'd almost have to go through each one, but there is sort of an allowance there for a certain threshold of carryover.
Thank you. Uh, and, and, and along those same lines with uh state funds, can you just give us an example of uh certain grants that are uh awarded to the Hartford Public School District by the state of, uh, state of Connecticut?
Um, sure, so um, you know, we get our state magnet operating grant. We have um, you know, there's an excess cost grant, there's a grant around school readiness. Um, I think there's some sort of health-related type of grants. But those are much different than our federal grants. A lot of those don't allow any carry forward every year, so you have to use your granted award amount within that school year.
Okay, so it is a use it or lose it type of thing. Well, lose it as in you have to give back uh what you have not spent during the academic school year?
Absolutely.
Okay. And proceedly, um, one more question regarding ECS. I know that it's usually done uh in, I think, October and uh April. I might be hav- having the days off, uh, the, the months off. Um, but uh can you just walk us through uh ECS, how, how that is uh, how that is um provided, how that is sent from the state to the city, and how that is actually rolled out into, plays a factor, rather, uh, in the HPS uh budget?
Um, sure, I can, I can give you some context. I'm certainly not a an expert in this space, but um I think you're right about the dates. I think you're fairly close there. So um the ECS would be granted through the city. The way the city sort of reimburses us or provides the funding to the district is um just about every month or so, I think it is, they provide some level of funding to us which compensates us for the city portion as well as the ECS portion. And then I think this, I think the ECS gets you know, kind of trued up per se in the April time period. So October is your, kind of your first look based on your enrollment, and then your second look is, is sort of your final true-up.
Okay, thank you for that context.
Thank you for those questions, Councilman Clark. Dr. Torres, I have a question. How much support will, will our students need that, that you see coming up? Do you elaborate a little bit on that?
Um, I can try to ex- um, how about if I um actually contextualize it in some uh actual data trends that we're seeing? Um,
That would be wonderful.
For example, our chronic absenteeism, which I raised earlier, uh currently fifty-nine percent of our students are considered being chronically absent. The definition of chronic absenteeism is students that are, that have missed ten percent or more of the school year. And so pretend that we have had, you know, a hundred days of the year, and if students miss ten days, they're chronically, considered chronically absent. Um, and so that number was at about twenty to twenty-five percent last year. So that can give you an indication that if across all schools, the number, the percentage of chronic absenteeism has increased, then we know we're going to need additional staffing across all thirty-nine schools now, or across the the, the schools that didn't have a challenge with chronic absenteeism, for example. And so that's one example. The other one that I'll um speak to is our early literacy. So we know that reading by grade three is an indicator actually of students completing high school on time and on track. So when students get off that track early on, we know that we're going to have to have additional supports. Where we currently are with our assessment is that in uh elementary grades, seventy-five percent of our students are not reading at grade level. That was our assessment that we just completed. And so think about that in term, that nev- that number has never been that high. And so we know that we're going to need to invest in uh additional staffing, additional support, perhaps. It is doing more intense uh programming in the summer, perhaps looking at um what do we do on Saturdays? What do we do um with an extended year? And so I, I wish, um, you know, Council President, that I had a very specific um, you know, amount. We are not there yet, especially because we, we don't know yet what that looks like at the high school level. Right? We wanted to get through the first semester, which is mid-January, to see, you know, with regard to credits for our high schoolers, to see how much additional supports they're going to need. I hope that was helpful in trying to just lift some actual outcome data that we have looked at in chronic absenteeism and literacy.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilman LeBron?
So, yes, um. Oh, yes, Dr. Torres Rodriguez. The, there's been, we had a committee meeting two weeks ago where the Director of the Department of Children and Youth Family Recreation, I'm sure you know who that is, Ms. Kim Oliver, indicated to us that there is discussions around the city supporting in terms of pods and there's this talk of pods used in the city. Could this or would these funds be able to help support that structure in the city?
So I think those, we would have to look closer at that because the pods would be administered, managed by community-based partners. And so as I understand, the funding is directly through the city. And I believe that some funds are early readiness, school readiness funding, as some of the funds that are going to be earmarked. So it could potentially be a yes, Councilman LeBron, but I'm not sure exactly what the amount and the funding streams that have been identified on Ms. Oliver, that your end.
So just to let you know, Doctor, that at the last meeting, I believe somebody was going to do a follow-up on where the expenses could be spent in regards to this rainy day fund. I forgot who it was. I think it was somebody on the HPS side who was going to follow up in terms of giving us clarity as to what we could spend the money on. So lastly, this is a very intentional question for our elected officials at a statewide level. So, but I'm going to ask it to you guys at HPS. And so what is our current per pupil funding? And where do we rank in terms of the other cities in the state?
Yeah, I don't know that off the top of my head. I think I have to follow up. It's been a few years since I've seen that data.
I could add that when we, you know, kind of step back, it could be anywhere, when we kind of pool it all together, right? All of the funding that we get, you know, it's anywhere from 19,000 to, could be 20,000, if you will, potentially for per student. What that doesn't take into account, as I referenced before, Councilman LeBron, is the excess, the added costs that we would have to take into account for students that have individualized education plans, right? Students that might need a paraeducator to support with their plan implementation. Students that might need to be outplaced, for example. And so it's not always, you know, that one per pupil. But I know that, you know, that's a question that many, you know, kind of ask, especially in neighboring towns, right? I know that that's usually a question from neighboring towns. Oh, well, you know, if your per pupil, you know, funding is this much, you know, I always like to remind folks, we're all per pupil costs, right? Is this much more, given the fact that we serve a community that is a high-need community.
And then so I just wanted to interject in that is the special education clause, as you referenced, but also English as a second language or ELL, like those type of cause infer more. So I was just trying to just, you know, just throw that out there so that folks could understand. But thank you guys so much.
I will, if you allow me to clarify that it's yes, those two. We do have 55% of our students that are Hispanic. 20% are special, you know, education students. 21% are English learners. And so you look at those and that's about, you know, 5,000 to 6,000 students. But it is additional costs, you know, related to those, you know, students that need additional needs. But I would also say, we have students that don't necessarily fall into those groups that also have additional needs. We have students that, you know, are, that English is their native, their native language, right? Their first language, yet they need additional supports. And students that might come to us with other needs that, you know, are a result of students that have, you know, lived in poverty for extended amounts of time, students that have not had access to early childhood education, right? And we have to mitigate for that. So is yes, everything that you referenced, Councilman LeBron, but it's also, right, many other external ecological factors that our students, you know, need support with?
Thank you so much for that detail and that clarity. I think that helps, I think it helps all of us here on the council.
Thank you, Dr. Torres. Are there any other questions from any of the council members? Okay, since there are no further questions from my colleagues, I want to thank you, Dr. Torres, and our new CFO, welcome aboard, Big Flight, for taking the time to provide us with this presentation and clarification. I want to wish everyone a nice evening. And with no other business to discuss, I am calling this meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone. Stay safe.